Okay, I would like to welcome everybody to the March 2 regular meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. There is information on our agenda on how to join us using Zoom. You can dial in by telephone, using the Internet, or using the Zoom app itself. And I just want to caution folks that if you are dialing in via telephone, there is a 10 to 20 second delay. So if you're planning on commenting tonight, please make sure to be listening over your phone or using the Zoom app itself. Okay. We're officially called to order, and I'd like to ask you all to join me in the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we please have a roll call?
Ivor Scavdall.
President.
Noah Levy.
Lonix Landry.
President.
Thomas Mulder.
Here.
Peggy O'Neil.
Here.
And Brian Mitchell.
Present.
Okay, I'll now ask the Director if there are any modifications to our agenda tonight.
There is one modification that we would ask for. Item number E8 is on the consent calendar, and that's the Burr Road LLC. We would ask that that be removed from the consent calendar and continued to a date uncertain. There is also a supplemental on that. There's a letter from a neighboring property owner, and so that's available in the public record, but we are asking that that be continued to a date uncertain.
Do we need to do a separate vote on that, or cannot be changed as part of the consent agenda to continue it?
To be safe, I would ask that you remove it from consent, have a separate vote.
Okay. So we'll now go through public comments on items not listed on our agenda. At this time, folks may appear before this commission on any matter pertinent to our jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address the commission on items not listed on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment in the building and look to our Zoom attendees. I don't see any hands up, so I will go ahead and close public comment. The next item is our consent agenda. All of these public hearing matters are routine in nature and are usually approved by a single vote. The Chair will poll the audience and members of the commission to determine if any items on the consent agenda should be pulled for public comment or further discussion. So I will be pulling items one and two. Next comes item three, Punta Cana LLC, but this one is recommended for continuance. So unless anyone would like to comment on the continuance, we will leave it on the consent agenda. Next is item number four, Merriweather Farms LLC in the Whitethorne area. Is there any member present in the public who would like to have this item pulled, or any member of the commission? Okay, seeing none, I don't see anyone on the Zoom who has raised their hand, so item four will stay on consent. Item five, Fantastic Gardens LLC zoning clearance certificate and special permit in the Dinsmore area. Is there any member of the public or commissioner who wishes to have this item pulled and considered And let the record reflect that there are no attendees asking to pull this item either. So item five will stay on the consent agenda. Item six, Fantastic Gardens LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Dinsmore area. Is there any member of the public or members of the commission who wish to have this pulled and considered separately? Seeing none, and noting that there are no members of the public raising their hand, item six will remain on the consent agenda. Item seven, Fantastic Gardens LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Dinsmore area. Is there anyone who would like to have this item pulled and considered separately? Seeing none, and noting that no participants on Zoom are requesting this, item seven will remain on the consent agenda. Item eight will skip and come back to because staff has requested that this item be continued to a date uncertain.
If I could, Chair, that is the effect of pulling it off consent. We are pulling it off consent to continue it, just to be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
Item nine, Enchanted Springs Farm LLC in the Willow Creek area. Are there any members of the public or members of the commission who would like to have this item pulled and considered separately? Seeing none, and noting that there are no members on Zoom requesting that it be pulled, item nine will remain on consent. Item 10, Enchanted Springs Incorporated conditional use permit in the Willow Creek area. This one is noted as a denial, is that correct? Okay.
That is correct.
So this is a denial of Enchanted Springs LLC. Is there any member of the public or members of the commission who wish to have this item pulled and heard separately? Seeing none, and noting that no members on Zoom are requesting so, item 10 will be denied as part of the consent agenda. And that is all of the items. And so could I please get a motion from someone to have items three, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, and 10 be approved as part of the consent agenda?
I so move.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Mulder. Do we have a second?
A second then.
We have a second. Okay. Trip, can we please get a roll call vote on those items?
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Lonix Landry.
Aye.
And Ivor Scavdall.
Yes.
Okay, so all the items that remained on the consent agenda passed unanimously. So going back to items that were pulled, I believe?
First, we go to old business and then to items that were pulled.
Got it. So that brings us now to old business. Item one, the William Cosby special permit in the McKinleyville area. And we'd like to start with a staff report, please.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Rodney Andel. I'll be presenting tonight for the William Cosby special permit in the McKinleyville The project is indicated there by that pushpin. It's in that area there, southwest of McKinleyville High School, northeast of Hiller Park, between the 101 and Central Avenue in the northern section of McKinleyville. This project is an after-the-fact special permit for the construction of a 32-square-foot storage building. The special permit is required as the storage building's floor area exceeds the maximum gross floor area for an accessory building that can be principally permitted in the R1 zoning district. The size of the storage building is substantially larger than accessory buildings in the vicinity. For this reason, this application was brought to the Planning Commission for consideration as it has the potential to affect the character of the surrounding residential community. While the size of the storage building is substantially larger than accessory buildings in the vicinity, the subject parcel is unusually large for the area. Properties in the vicinity are generally between 8,000 and 22,000 square feet in lot area, and the subject parcel is 2.6 acres in lot area, about 113,000 square feet. As the purpose of the building is to store the applicant's recreational vehicles and backhoe that have been historically stored outdoors, the addition of the storage building could be considered an improvement to aesthetics in the immediate area. Also, the storage building is constructed in the middle of the area of the lot, leaving substantially greater than required setbacks from all property lines. This slide shows Mr. Cosby's site plan, and the structure is located in the northeastern part of that image you see there on the screen. Staff is recommending that the commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15 303 of SECP guidelines, and make all the required findings for approval of this special permit, and adopt the resolution approving the William Cosby special permit subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for staff by any members of the commission? I have two questions. The first of which is, can you briefly explain how this comes to us as a after-the-fact special permit?
Mr. Cosby constructed the structure without permits, and he's seeking to rectify that.
If he had come in before building it, would we have done any analysis in terms of reduction in ability for further subdivision of the lot, or creation of additional housing units?
I don't think I would have took that approach. Mr. Cosby wanted to build the structure. It does require a special permit. It is in the R1 zoning district, and he shows no desire or has exhibited no desire to subdivide his parcel.
Okay, Peggy?
What year did he build this?
I believe it was last year.
And he built it without a permit?
Yes.
It has no plumbing or electrical in it?
It has no plumbing or electrical. It's not built for habitation. It's strictly to store his recreational vehicles and his backhoe and whatever else he needs to put in there.
But he probably was aware that he needed a permit?
I don't know that.
Any, Commissioner Mulder?
I have two questions. First off is, I heard the comments about subdivisions. It's my understanding, and I want to be corrected if I'm wrong, a property owner has the right to subdivide or not subdivide their property. Under private property rights, they can't be forced to subdivide their property into smaller parcels for residential. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. And then the issue of no permit was brought up. In Humboldt County statistically, I've found a lot of people in the building trade may build a building and then get a permit later.
Yes.
And that's from northern to southern Humboldt. So this isn't a one-time scenario. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct.
Thank you.
And the structure doesn't preclude him from subdividing in the future?
Question through the Chair.
Commissioners, can I have them?
Thank you. Just in the process of coming to us, were the adjoining properties notified?
Yes, within 300 feet of the property line, and we received no comments or concerns from the surrounding parcels.
Thank you. And then, to be clear, this is the storage of recreational vehicles and personal equipment, not for commercial use, construction?
That's correct.
Or any of those types of materials?
Yes, we're going to have him sign a deed restriction to ensure that that takes place.
Thank you.
He has stated he has no desire to do that. He just has some RVs and stuff that need a place to...
That's my understanding. I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would now like to open it up for the public who may...
Just to follow our procedure, do we give the applicant the opportunity to do a presentation if they're present via in-person or in Zoom?
Yes, we will. If the applicant or applicant's agent is here tonight, will you please wave your hand or raise it on Zoom so that we can give you an opportunity? Okay, please step forward.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
My name is Keith Castenquay. I'm from Eureka, and I'm representing the proponent in a land use, an environmental capacity. Helped him prepare the application after the fact. If you have any questions for me, over and above what I've heard here, the project was done just to protect his depreciation and premature aging of all that valuable stuff he had. It's lower in elevation than irregular houses in the community that are second story. The color and aesthetics are consistent with are the most common colors people use. It meets building code and exceeds building code in several ways. And we even obtained an engineering study to prove that. And so Building Department has also looked at this. And there's no habitation, like we talked about earlier. It's not for commercial purposes, never was intended for commercial purposes. You know, it's just, over 90% of the property is still available for further subdivision. And, you know, if you can think of anything else to ask me, please do. It's exactly why a special permit was initiated in this RL district, for structures like this in a situation like this. It's nothing unusual. You know, it's been built well, and it's been approved, and staff's recommending approval as well.
Would you be able to come back later and add electricity or plumbing to the property?
Well, at this point, I can't answer that. It would be a Building Department question, but there hasn't been... If there were electricity added in the future, which wasn't the intent, no utilities were proposed or ever considered, then it would require additional permitting to, you know, to put in, we'll say, another electric meter, for example.
Okay.
And there was no intention of ever doing that. It's just pure storage, temporary storage.
Commissioner Mulder?
Through the Chair. Just wanted to make sure it was on record that this would be for residential recreational storage and not for commercial use.
Yeah, and the deed restriction's really going to nail that down.
Yes.
You know, that's, and it's open and notorious. You know, everyone can see what's going on there, and it's, I think it's an improvement to the built environment. And there's no design review required for this district anyways.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Question for staff. If this had been brought forward ahead of time, would we have analyzed the location of the storage so that in the future we could maximize the residential density, at least to the midpoint of the density in its siting?
Sure. We would not have. This is because an accessory structure could presumably be removed fairly easily if they were to seek to subdivide. And so one of the things that we would have done is analyzed it to see, you know, is it median? Is it increasing setbacks? Is it out of character with the neighborhood? And so I think whether this was constructed with or without permits, we would have recommended it go through this process and be in a public hearing because it is substantially larger than typical. So, but I don't believe that we would have analyzed it relative to its ability to preclude subdivision because it's not necessarily a long-term permanent structure that would prohibit the ability to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant's agent? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So now I would like to open it up to public comment for anyone in the audience or attending virtually via Zoom to comment on this item. Is there anyone here today who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, and seeing none on Zoom, I will now close public comment and turn this over to the commission for discussion and action.
I just have one question. What would you have required in terms of a cultural review of that site prior to allowing them to construct that? Would there have been that requirement?
Yes, the project was referred to NWIC and the local tribes, and a cultural resource survey wasn't requested. I forget the exact language of the referral response, but it was something to that effect that there was no concerns regarding cultural resources.
So had he asked for a permit in advance, he would not, he would have done the check that's done after the fact, but he should have done it before.
Yes, if he would have asked for it in advance, we would have sent it out for referrals. And since he asked for it, you know, after the fact, we sent it out for referrals.
Okay, but I'm just a little concerned that it should have been done in advance. I mean, maybe this time it wasn't relevant, but it could have been.
That's correct.
And so, you know, if I wanted to get around following the rules, I'd just go ahead and build it and then come back later. Had there been a response that said that there was a potential for something to be on that site, then how would you have responded?
Well, Commissioner O'Neil, I do want to clarify that this went through the same process as it would have gone whether it was constructed before permits were proposed and gone through the normal process. And so as Mr. Andel mentioned, we did go through the referral process, we did contact the tribes, and it is not unusual that in the process of permitting or going through the application process for things that were built without permits, that we do actually require an archaeological survey or a site visit that may include the tippos if they raise concerns.
Right, but this was retroactive, and so we were fortunate that there wasn't, at least we don't know. So had there been, my question was, had there been a response back that said there could potentially be something there, what would you have done?
If that was the case, we would have, if, we would have talked to the local tribal historic preservation officer, and if there was a concern raised, we would have required that a cultural resource survey be prepared and potentially a site visit with the tipple to determine if there is any resources that may have been impacted. And if there were, there would have been mitigation that would have been developed, which could include removing the structure.
I guess the problem that I have is if I thought there was something on my property and I didn't want to go through the process of, you know, getting a permit and having to do those studies, I'd just go ahead and do it anyway, and then I come back and say, you know, I just needed to get this done, so I decided to circumvent the process, and we were fortunate this time that it wasn't a problem. But we've had other projects where there was a problem when someone decided to just wing it and do something on their own. So I'm a little concerned about that, especially, I mean, I, maybe I get when you're way up in the hills and you don't think anyone's ever going to show up, but in this case, it's in town, you know, it's pretty obvious that you're building something there. You have neighbors all around. I know historically people built without permits out in the middle of nowhere. I can point a lot of them in the eastern district, but I just don't think it's a good habit that we should say, oh, it happens all the time, so it's okay. Because we're setting then sort of a, you know, it's okay to do this.
Yeah, through the Chair, I would agree with what you're saying. Through the referral process, usually the comments that we get from the local tribes are based on their knowledge of, you know, areas that might have been utilized by the natives and...
It's just not, you know, the people that are living today can't know everything about what happened prior, so sometimes you can be surprised, and there could be things there that one individual now doesn't know that was going to be there, so you can't know everything. My mother-in-law used to say, those people that know everything have been gone for a long time, and so, you know, you just don't know.
Agreed. Commissioner Mulder?
I hear your concerns, and I actually share your concerns, Peggy, and I feel that what I'm hearing from the staff and from the referrals that came through, that there isn't potential resource, and I don't think we'd be sharing a message, or I don't feel if this was approved tonight, that we'd be sharing a message like, build everything without a permit and don't worry about it. I think what I'm hearing from staff is saying that, hey, this site got lucky and it didn't have any resources, but in future, if there's a site that comes forward that may have resources, we may recommend tearing that structure down, is what I heard staff say. So I feel if this was approved today, it's not saying a free-for-all, it's saying, hey, if you think you might have some resources, don't think about building there without having the right referral.
And I don't think we should send the signal that, eh, it happens all the time, and so it's okay, just go ahead and do it, and, because, I mean, I might do it, you know, other people do it, and then they could unearth something, and it's underneath concrete now, and no one's going to know the difference.
Commissioner Scavdall?
Yep, and Commissioner O'Neil, I appreciate you pointing that out. I think it is important to understand that this, the applicant built at risk without getting a permit, applied for the permit after the fact, which is also at risk that the permit could be denied or conditioned in such a way that would cause the applicant to have to do additional work. I think this commission is going to hold people accountable for complying with the standards in the county regardless of whether they apply for the permit after the fact or before. And I think we want to be clear that building without a permit is certainly a risk, and there's risk that this commission wouldn't support applicants after the fact. So, and I appreciate you bringing that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Landry?
Two points. One, we don't know what was happening in a particular location, you know, before contact and newcomers being here. So we have processes, and we should be following those processes. And the other point is, or actually, it's a question for staff, and that is, so when you say, in a location like McKinleyville, you checked with the tribes, who are you specifically talking about?
I believe this was referred to the Wiat tribe of Blue Lake Rancharia and the Bear River Band of the Roanokeville Rancharia.
Thank you. When we get after-the-fact permits for folks who built without benefit of permit, is there any sort of additional fees or something else in part of legitimizing that that does send a message that this is going to cost you? that does send a message that this is going to cost you?
I believe the building permit fees are tripled for after-the-fact building permits.
Any further discussion before moving on to a motion?
I'll make a motion to find the proposed project complies with general plan and zoning ordinance and find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15303 of CEQA guidelines and that there is no substantial evidence that the project will have a significant effect on the environment and approve the special permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
Okay. We've got a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. Trip, roll call vote, please.
Ivor Skavdahl.
Yes.
No. No, Olivia. Lonix Landry.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Now, that brings us to items pulled from the consent agenda. And if it's all right, I'd like to start with item eight, which is, I believe, the continuance. Item eight, the Burr Road LLC conditional use permit. We are continuing this item to a date uncertain. Would anyone like to speak to the continuance and only the continuance? Okay. Seeing none and none over the Zoom. Can I please have a motion to continue this to a date uncertain?
Motion to continue the Burr Road LLC conditional use permit and special permit application to a date uncertain.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Trip?
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Lonix Landry.
Aye.
And Ivor Skavdahl.
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries unanimously. That brings us now to the action summaries. I have a couple of, I guess, corrections or questions. On the January 19th item.
Can you pull up the presentation, please?
Yeah. Can we pull that up, please?
Yeah, I can share.
Is this me or John? It's me.
Party. This is the January 19th.
Can you make that bigger? Who shared that?
It's me.
So, at the very, very top, we're list who's on the commission. We've removed the other at-large commissioner who was present and participating in this meeting. So, I believe she should be added back.
That's, uh, granted, yes. Sorry about that. I can do a better question.
Okay. And then, going to the item that had a amending motion, it shows that we voted first on the motion and then after that, we voted on the amendment when, in fact, the votes happened in the other way. So, I think you need to say, a motion was made, here was a motion, and an amending motion was made, and here was that amendment. Then, here's the out, the motion, the amended motion had this outcome, and then, we voted on the amended motion with a unanimous approval. Does that make sense?
We will make that change. We'll make the change. I got it.
Okay. Perfect.
I guess I didn't catch that.
And then, if we could go to the February 16th.
Excuse me?
Oh, do you have?
Do we have to approve these?
No, we'll bring them back.
Yeah, they're not ready.
Will you make a motion to approve these with the corrections as noted?
We'll wait till they come back.
Okay.
Because if we'd done that last time, then this is the second time we're looking at them.
Yeah, but we got three times.
Third time's a charm. Okay.
Do you have a question?
So, okay, so, we are looking at now the February 16th. Can we go to the, let's see. So, I don't know if you want to take Melanie off of this one.
Yeah, no, it's instead.
But also, let's see.
Do you have a question?
Wait, hold on. Were you, were you, is this your first meeting?
This is my second.
No, sorry. This meeting that we're talking about, the February 16th.
Yeah, it's his first meeting.
That was your first meeting? Okay. Then, that's the only change I have. Okay. So, that now brings us to new business. We already did it.
Those were instead.
Yeah. So, item one, North Wind Management LLC conditional use permit and coastal development permit in the Samoa area. How long do we expect this total presentation to be?
So, the presentation shouldn't be too long. I would expect there might be some deliberation, but we are having a little bit of difficulty pulling up the presentation right now. So, if you don't mind taking a recess, that'd be...
I was, that was where I was going. So, I will go ahead and put us in a break, and we will reconvene at 6:50.
Recording in progress.
Just wanted to check in with staff and make sure that whatever technical difficulties we were having have been fixed. Okay. So, we are ready for North Wind Management LLC conditional use permit and coastal development permit.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Megan Oscevedo, and I am the assigned planner for North Wind Management LLC. They are applying for a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit in the Samoa The project is located in the Samoa area within the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. The parcel is in the coastal zone, is 19 acres, zoned industrial, general and industrial coastal dependent. The project is located entirely in the industrial coastal dependent zone portion of the parcel. The project is accessed off of New Navy Base Road, which is a category four county-maintained The project proposal consists of one acre of new indoor cultivation with ancillary nursery and drying activities within a new 50,875 square foot warehouse structure shown in yellow. Non-volatile and volatile manufacturing activities are proposed within two new 480 square foot modular structures. They are shown in red. Off-site processing, distribution, and infusion activities will occur within two existing structures onsite shown in blue. The project will also utilize 29 removable shipping containers for climate-controlled drying and storage area shown in green. Water will be sourced from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And annual water usage is anticipated at 384,000 gallons per year, and the applicant has received a will-serv letter from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District stating that they can supply the annual water needs for the project. Hydroponic cultivation techniques will be utilized for indoor cultivation, and approximately 360,000 gallons of the total water usage is anticipated for irrigation needs. Power is provided by PG&E, and the applicant is required to supply all power from renewable energy sources by PG&E. The project will likely be phased with activities occurring in the existing structures prior to indoor cultivation activities within the proposed warehouse and/or manufacturing activities within the proposed modular units. Up to 40 employees will be used during peak season. As the project is located in the MC zone for industrial coastal dependent uses, and the project is not a coastal dependent use, the project is eligible for an interim use permit of three to seven years for the conditional use permit and coastal development permit. Per section 313-104.1 of the Humboldt County Code for Performance Standards in the industrial coastal dependent zone, the project has shown that it will not be detrimental to other coastal dependent uses. The project will utilize and enhance the existing structures onsite where feasible, will incorporate the use of removable modular units onsite, and the project will add a new warehouse structure which could enhance the site for future coastal dependent uses. The planning division is recommending a five-year interim period for the project with the opportunity to receive a five-year extension at the time of expiration. The project is located near the Harbor District's master plan area for offshore wind and aquaculture uses. The project was referred to the Harbor District, and after continued communication with the Harbor District, they support a five-year interim period for the permit. All lifelong requirements for interim use projects in the MC zone have been applied as conditions on the project. This concludes my presentation, and myself and staff are available for questions.
So, first, I'd like to start off with commissioners' questions for staff based on the presentation. Commissioner O'Neill.
So, I've brought this up in the past. You know, that's in a tsunami run-up area. So, what, you know, when you're attracting 40 new employees into that area, what is your plan to protect those employees if there is a tsunami?
So, they do have a tsunami evacuation plan and a tsunami assessment. There are no requirements for a tsunami evacuation plan, but I have included a condition that employees are to go through training for that plan.
Just, you know, I don't know how much staff is aware of the tsunami dangers out there, but you're, you have about five to 10 minutes. If you have an offshore tsunami, they move at about 500 miles per hour. You're not going to be able to evacuate unless you have a very sturdy, high structure to evacuate to, and I don't think that's part of this plan. So, there's not much you're going to be able to do in terms of evacuation. I mean, you could get trained if it was an, you know, a distant tsunami that you had hours to prepare for, but anything close, you're not going to be able to evacuate. That's just something I'm just going to probably keep bringing up because as we put more and more people out there without, you know, real good plans in place, then we're just putting the employees at risk.
Commissioner Landry.
I'm curious. I've heard a few times now where we're talking about when we make a structure or build a structure, that it's an improvement to the space. And I'm wondering where that kind of standard comes from, that a structure means an improvement.
So, the warehouse structure is in line with coastal dependent uses. Just a large structure of that sort can be used for boat recreation, or it can be used for industrial uses. So, I did verify that the warehouse is in line with coastal dependent uses, though we don't know what the future use of that site is going to be. That is why I did say that it could enhance the site for future coastal dependent uses.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, in regards to runoff and potential nutrification happening within the bay, how that may impact the oyster industry, where could I find, which report here would address some of those concerns?
Can you please clarify your concerns? I'm sorry.
So, when we have fertilizers and things like that, hydroponic system that spill over, work their way into the bay through natural processes, the nutrification that can happen from that, I'm wondering in these reports, which one may address that type of concern?
So, the applicant does have a materials management plan, but there is a condition that the applicant enroll with the regional water board, and they are required to take any industrial tailings offsite to an appropriate facility for disposal. So, any new, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking of the right words.
Nutrification?
Yeah. Any effluent from the indoor cultivation would be required to be taken offsite to an appropriate facility. It would not, it's not allowed to go into the onsite septic or to go down. If the site is to be connected to public water and sewer, it's not going to be disposed that way either.
Thank you. How is the Coastal Commission treated interim permits in coastal dependent industrial zoning for marijuana-growing use, types of uses?
Well, through the adoption of the commercial, I guess we're calling it the coastal commercial cannabis land use ordinance, that was reviewed. The Coastal Commission did certify that coastal ordinance, which does outline that in the MC zone, cannabis can be considered an interim use permit. So, that was something that they did review and was part of the process, and the Coastal Commission did certify that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we, Commissioner Skavdahl?
Yeah. Again, on public notification, was a public notified, and would that notification have extended to the residential parcels to the north?
This project did not require an early notice of application, and so, the notice that we sent was in reference to the hearing today, and that would have been sent out to any parcels within 300 feet. So, I don't believe that would include any of the residential parcels to the north.
Okay. And then, a follow-up question, just, are there any odor control, you know, management plans in this operation plan, or how's that?
There are no odor control requirements for this zone or for the Humboldt Bay Area Plan. Plan.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to go ahead and ask if the applicant is here or an agent thereof, I'd like to invite you up to give any opening statements. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Mitchell and through the chair, Commission. Thank you guys very much and staff for all the work that you do. It's always a pleasure to be here knowing all the hard work that went into bringing a project to this point. I wanted to back up for a second and just chat about just this general area on the Seminole Peninsula and the MC zone. I believe that you should be aware that this permit has two pieces to it. One is the cannabis conditional use permit and the other is the interim uses in a coastal dependent zone. Wanted to note that this property was part of a much bigger development that occurred for some time and it went dormant with the pulp mill removing. The site, as you saw on the site plan, there's an existing office building and I don't know who has all been there, but it's a beautiful building, big redwood presentations on the inside. And this property owner came in through after years of blight, I guess, and no improvement. He's come up, cleaned the property up, really looking to make a big difference to making sure this property is managed and presented well. Some of the issues that are associated with the conditions in the background of the permit show that, for instance, the water lines through the various properties out here through Humboldt Bay Water District, there's a condition to help put a meter in there. Utilities had been tangled in this area, and so this project helps move and untangle that past history and puts this property in a more useful function. I wanted to hope that as the discussion goes on tonight, that the CDI uses non-cannabis is something that is equally acceptable under this approval, where if it is principally permitted within the MG zone or the, well, it's an MC zone, but the interim uses permit expands the principally permitted uses to those listed within the ML and the MG zones, is my understanding. So as we move forward, this project potentially gets approved, someone could come in and lease this office space and say, run a warehousing distribution business out of that existing office space under this approval and would be able to get a building permit. So I think I'm asking for a little bit of clarity in the approval and the bifurcation kind of of the two approvals. So it's kind of a question for staff, is that a true statement?
Chair, if we could, if there needs to be a discussion, I don't think having it in an open hearing is a good idea.
Okay, so would you like us to put off this item till the next meeting so discussions can be had?
I would ask the applicant if it's not clear enough at this point and what he wants to do.
Okay, back to you.
What does the applicant want to do? Well, I, I mean, I was, it was my understanding there's those two approvals happening tonight, so I'd like to just continue through the discussion. So one, I hope that's the case, that, and John, you're suggesting that we just discuss that if that's not clear right in front of us. I think it's an important piece of this project to the client and that being able to use the existing buildings for non-cannabis use and non-coastal dependent is part of the ask this evening, and if that is not clear in the area, I would like to then continue this till we clarify it.
So I will respond to that. If they want to come in and do something that's allowed by right in the MC zone, in the existing buildings, that's allowed. That doesn't even need to be covered by this permit.
But that would require coastal dependent use?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, I believe that in the project description, it does describe that these CDI uses could occur in that existing building, and I am comfortable with that language. I thought it would be good to be clear and help the Commission understand that there are two approvals going forward. I guess I honestly, for the benefit of the project, I would take the Director's guidance and say, we'd have a conversation, continue it to another night, and let's clarify what we mean by that interim uses approval. I had been here before the Commission in the past and brought other interim uses permit projects through, and that was my understanding.
Director Ford, do you think that a 15 or 20-minute, okay, then we're going to go ahead and take a break until 7:30 and we'll be back then?
Recording in progress.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone back from our recess, and I'd like to invite the applicant's agent back to the lectern. You have a couple, a few more minutes to finish your presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. In clarification, there are two approvals going forward, the cannabis and the interim uses on the property, and the clarification was that the existing office space within the building could be leased for office space during the interim use period. That's all I was trying to say and be clear with that. The CDI program that the county came up with allows for these interim uses as long as there's a lease with a kicker in it. So I want to be clear that the tenants, cannabis tenants and non-cannabis tenants would have to understand that in their lease, that if a CDI use comes up, then they have six months to get out of their lease and leave the building to allow for a CDI use to come in. It's very relevant to the fact that we're next to the Harbor District's port and wind energy project and next to Nordic. The property owner is in support of those projects and absolutely want to work with them if that opportunity comes up. Wanted to be clear that in the interim uses permit that allows a five-year period, the rules do say up to seven years with a three-year extension. The applicant is accepting of the five-year term and recognizes that when they come back five years from now and there is no imminent coastal dependent use present, then they would be able, through this Commission, be extended an additional five years for these interim uses on the property. I believe that makes that clear. With regards to the questions that you asked, Mr. Landry, the evacuation on the peninsula, there are, oh, it was actually Peggy, excuse me, the, there are two evacuation locations on the peninsula. It is written within the project operation plan that there will be training. We would take a additional condition where there would be instruction to employees onsite to know how to get to these evacuation areas on the peninsula. I think that's a, well-taken, as you're aware, there are a plan for these evacuation areas on the peninsula. And then with regards to the stormwater or actually discharge from the actual cultivation, that was your question. One, in the operations plan, it is a closed-loop system, so it'll continually regenerate and there will be zero discharge, and through the State Water Resource Control Board for the cannabis discharge order, they require a waiver for cultivation indoor and they require a zero discharge requirement. So the salts and the nutrients will be recaptured and nothing will ever be discharged from the building. I'd really like to hear your guys' further thoughts and be available to rebuttal any questions at the end of the public comment period. I'd take any further questions now, if you have them, or reserve the time to respond to additional questions after public comment.
Do these closed-loop systems come with some sort of warranty by the manufacturers to cover any cleanup that might be required if there were to be a failure?
I am unaware of a warranty through the closed-loop system. However, it is an operator requirement to, you know, you basically have a nutrient and it's being pumped through the system and then the water is being recaptured, and so the recapture process has to be maintained by the operator. And the part of the COOPA and the requirements of managing resources onsite would require that most nutrients are stored in a secure, safe fashion and only the nutrients necessary for that current water cycling or hydroponic use would be within the system. I don't know if that answers your question.
All right, thank you. Any other questions at this time?
So the potential neighbors, would you remind me which ones you mentioned again? It was one of the wind and was it also Nordic?
Yes, Nordic, the property Nordic is looking to build on is just to the south and the port that is visioned for wind energy is to the north.
Okay, thank you. So what are some examples of potential working with thems that you all could hypothesize?
Conversations have happened, like maybe construction crews that are going to come build those facilities need an office building or need a warehouse to store their construction materials in. Potentially, there's going to be some coordination of working with Nordic to bring utilities into the site. Just a couple, I mean, there's probably dozens and dozens, but those are two examples that come to mind.
Thank you, sir. And one last comment, the Titanic wasn't supposed to sink either. Thank you.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
Commissioner Scapdall.
Thank you. I've been to the site and I appreciate it's a very industrial site and, you know, industrial zoning and the project will be kind of tucked in there. At the same time, there is a residential area, I believe, to the north. Will there be any, I just, it doesn't sound like they've been notified of the potential project. I am concerned that there could be odors from the project site. Are there any controls for that, anything that you do, or is that a concern?
Odor is very specific to the person smelling it. As I heard from staff, there is no requirement at this location on this industrial property for that. There are systems out there that are implemented for scrubbing the air or putting odor and neutralization out into the air to help dissipate that smell as it might travel from the site. So I think that it's quite a far distance. I'm thinking at least a half a mile or further to the residential area that you're speaking to.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm trying to figure out is where is it with respect to this property and are we going to have concerns from those residents in the future?
I, the first step would be that a condition that says if odor is ever noticed as an issue, the applicant would then implement odor neutralization system or scrubbing system in order to help mitigate that, rather than put that out as a condition. I would suggest that if it happens to go that far, I think, my personal opinion is I think it's more than a half a mile and is unlikely that this receptor would notice the smell. However, you know, being sensitive to that it could be there, I could understand a condition that says if there is complaints, then an odor neutralization system would have to be put in place.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else before we open it up for general public comment? Okay, thank you. Now is the time when we open it up for members of the public to comment on this project. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to comment on this project? Or any members on Zoom tonight who would like to comment on this project? Okay, seeing none, I will now bring you back to the Commission for deliberation and potential action. Go ahead.
So I heard a little bit of comment about the smell, potential smell, and I heard like the entertainment of a potential added condition, but I wasn't clear, if we did go there, I think it would be good to kind of hone in, like if it was affecting to go back to like, from what I understand from like the SECO document, you would tie it back to like maybe smell from like residential smell because you couldn't just say someone biking down the road, all of a sudden, oh, I don't like that smell, and really you find out they bike down that road once every three years or something like that. So if we did go there, I'd want to make sure that we really hone that into if it affects residential, because that's what I remember any other projects we've put smell mitigations or potential smell mitigations, it had to do with residential, like, what's the most recent one, that large project in Arcata, there was like some sort of smell measures put on that one. So just wanted to make sure if we did go there that we kind of hone that in instead of like a really just open vague.
Yeah, I guess to respond to what you're saying, I, when we're told that there's no requirement to do that, I just, I'm curious about what the, what type of precedent I would set. And it sounds like they're willing to do that, so if the, if the majority of the Commission wants to do that, we can, but.
Yeah, my only concern is there's a housing unit, you know, to the north, there are outside play structures and yards there, there's a school. It is more than a half a mile away, I believe, may not be an issue, but they haven't been noticed. The project named North Wind Management is somewhat misleading to some people perhaps, and they may not be aware of what's being done here, and that's my only concern is will there be an odor issue for, you know, nearby residents? Doesn't sound like there will be. It sounds like if there is, there's a way to mitigate it, putting in this owner odor management system. Sounds like the applicant would be willing to do so if a problem developed. Largely probably likely thinking that it's unlikely that it will be a problem, but, so if we could require that condition, might be beneficial to the community should there be a problem in the future.
So we would need to word that in a manner of what is the trigger that activates it and then what happens? Does the Director have carte blanche power to approve their proposed mitigation? Or is that something that we have to wait till we hear complaints about? Or could that be part of the annual inspection that our staff does and could they walk down to the residential area and see if there's any smell issues? Thoughts, Director?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think we could do that, but I think I would say that the condition should probably allow for people to complain, and we do get complaints when there's a site that's producing odor. And so then if we can go and verify that the complaints are justified, then the applicant shall be required within a certain period of time, you know, it needs to be somewhat reasonable, it can't be a week, to design and install a system that would effectively neutralize the odor from outs, within a certain number of feet outside the unit, you could say. say even 500 feet, and that would clearly protect the residential area.
Sure. Since we didn't appear to notice the residential area property owners, would it be appropriate for us, upon approval, assuming we do approve this, to notify them of who to call if there are issues from this new project? Or how, like, how do we alert the residents of what to do if they have a problem?
Well, certainly, that could be done. I think one of the things that we're looking at is this is an industrial area that's about 37 to 38 hundred feet from the existing Samoa residences. So it's about nearly two-thirds of a mile. So it's, it's, it's quite a ways away, and at that distance, with the wind and other things, we typically don't get complaints at that distance, in all honesty. Usually the complaints we get are within several hundred feet. And, and so I, I think the commission needs to weigh that, and if you want to kind of put a, a safe on there that the applicant has said that they'd be willing to accept, that if there are complaints, not make them do it upfront, and not, I don't want to say invite trouble, but invite trouble by telling people that this is, is going to be something that produces odor, and if you have complaints, then they'll be looking for it. If, if it's not noticeable, and they don't notice it, they don't realize it's there, and I, I recognize the, the strange look, but a lot of people are just opposed to cannabis outright, and so by raising cannabis in front of them, that will produce complaints.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure. Commissioner Scott Dahl.
How far is this from the Fox Farm soil amendment site? Is it adjacent to that?
I didn't look at that. Let us, give us a minute.
It's in the general vicinity.
It's right there as well, isn't it?
It's, so they talked about the parts of, that the Harbor District are building. It's further south than that Fox Farm is?
Yeah, Fox, Fox Farm is south of the Redwood Terminal, it's south of the Green Diamond Site, it's, it's down in.
Okay. I was just wondering if we get, you know, it's, it's not the exact same use, obviously, but it's all outdoor. Okay.
Did you want to go?
Could I just say one more thing, Chair, and I don't want to advocate for or against the project, but I do want to say just a mere fact, it is actually within a building, is going to mitigate some of the smell impacts, just being inside a building.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm having a hard time with this, because I, I agree that I'm probably the one that's like, hey, don't add anything outside of what's required in the ordinance. You know, I think that's been a big one for me. And hearing that it's two-thirds of a mile away from residential, I'm kind of like, ugh. If there was any condition put on there, I don't think it'd be some, I don't feel it'd be something we would advertise, because I'm under the impression that the county gets phone calls about all kinds of things that people want the county to solve. So I don't feel that we would need to advertise that. But if we did, I would think it would have to be a number of verif, like a verified complaint, but like, it can't just be, if 20 people call in, then all of a sudden you have to do something. I think it would have to be, like, staff verifies it, and, I mean, how do you verify that it isn't someone in the residential area making that smell? That's, that's something else you have to think about as well, because that does happen.
Okay. Any other comments? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll keep asking questions until we're prepared to make a motion. Given that it's a conditional use permit, can it be, and it's, and it's of a limited term, five years, but can a conditional use permit, if we did get complaints, be amended in the future, or be revoked even? Or would there have to be some sort of a condition in this actual document that would allow us to do that?
It would require that whatever process is to be followed would be within this, since this is a CUP that's issued and has no, well, it has a, a five-year date on it, the renewal could reconsider that. But other than that, we could not go and force an amendment to the permit during the period when it's active, unless there's a condition to do that. If they're violating a condition, then, then that's a different story.
Okay. Because, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of the project, I think it, it does make use of an otherwise vacant industrial site. But I don't want it to be a nuisance for the, for the neighboring residents at the same time, so.
I have one question. So how, since it is an industrial site, and in the past we've heard, you know, presentations that showed that this project is improving the industrial site, can you go back over how it's improving it? I think he, he did a little bit where he said it's going to fix some utility issues, and is it cleaning up the site, is it, you know, improving the site?
I can say that in the existing facilities, they will do some minor upgrades. They're going to, they're required to assess the existing septic system on-site and make sure that it meets current code. They are also required to eventually connect to the public water and sewer. They are connected to water, just not sewer at the moment. And they will be adding the warehouse structure, which could be utilized for future coastal dependent uses. Also, the project utilizes modular units and the storage containers, which are removable. So they are required to put the site back to pre-project conditions. They have already cleaned up the existing structures on-site.
So any hazardous, is there any hazardous waste or anything that they've been required to clean up? What I'm getting at is this, how is this project improving an industrial site that may have been neglected, or?
So the site is a, it's part of the old pulp mill. There is a chip silo on-site, which is not a part of the project, and that is not getting cleaned up, it's just going to be fenced off and not used. Basically restricted area, which is potentially hazardous.
So through the chair, I will add that there was a Phase I environmental site assessment that was done that did identify, as Ms. Acevedo said, the, the chip silo, you know, is potentially having contamination, it's not being used, but it did identify that the area where the new, where this development is proposed, did not have any contamination.
I could add to everything that Megan and Cliff have said in response to your question, how's it improve the site? The struggle when the interim use ordinance was adopted was that lots of the buildings and everything out there were largely unused, the water lines were not being used, the septic system was not being used. And one of the things that starts to happen is that when things aren't being used, they tend to deteriorate faster. And so even the reuse of the building, the use of the water line, the maintenance of the building, the maintenance of the water line, the maintenance of the on-site wastewater treatment plant prolongs the life of what's there. And, and so that is an improvement. I think Ms. Acevedo's comment that the warehouse is being installed is something that absolutely can be used for coastal dependent industrial use.
So why would the chip silo not be a required cleanup? When, what would trigger them to have to clean that up?
Probably when the site is fully redeveloped to be a complete coastal dependent industrial You know, the, I, I think probably the thinking right now at this point is that the minimal use of this site in an interim period would not justify the cost of the removal of that.
I know when developers build things, they often have to go out and put in sidewalks and improve, you know, quite a bit, but in this case, we're just allowing, you know, further development so that the landowner can lease it to the wind people, or, you know, some, you know, and the cannabis is probably incidental, just to, you know, another source of income, but it looks like just from the name and some of the discussion I heard tonight, it's going to be multi-purposes. It, it just seems like there should be a plan to get rid of the silo in the future. I don't know how detrimental it is, you know, to the environment to allow it to continue to be there, but to just say, oh, well, we'll just ignore it for now. And I don't know if there's a plan in the future, or, you know, like, within five, 10 years, you're going to have a removal project, or we're just going to continue to just allow things that make money and not want to spend any money to take down things that are not good for.
Commissioner Mulder. I have a couple of questions. First off, is there a way in which we could, like, to get our conversation back, it seems like there's a little concern about the smell, but maybe not the majority of the, so would it be okay to, like, possibly, are you allowed to straw poll for us to dive into that more, or leave that as a, I don't want to ask for a bunch of staff time to try to develop language for a condition that maybe doesn't have a majority, or does have a majority.
I think in the past, what has proven to be the most expedient is for someone to make a motion and sort of say, you know, with the added condition of, and describe it briefly, then we can work on the specific language if it appears that through the discussion, enough members will support it.
Since I brought up the concern, I, I think I'm satisfied myself, but if staff could pull this location up on Google Maps, so we could actually, the, the figures in the staff report don't really help me get oriented with respect to where the housing is. When I look at it on Google Maps, I'm like, oh, it doesn't look like an issue. So I'm worried that I'm making an issue out of nothing here.
Well, also in the past, if the, if the applicant has agreed to it, we have added conditions with, you know, as long as they were in agreement, and this one doesn't sound like one that may even ever get triggered, so I don't see why it wouldn't be a problem to include it.
So I'm going to zoom out a little bit. So this is, oops, that's too far, sorry. This is the site right here. This is where the warehouse would be.
Right.
This is where the existing office building is. So the, the resident, this, so just for, this is the site, this is basically where the existing residential area for Samoa is up here.
Yeah, and between them, I thought was the fertilizer plant.
No, the fertilizer plant is further to the south down here.
All right, then what's that, just a little bit to the north?
This is the Green Diamond Site.
Yep, okay.
Sorry. This is a vacant site. This is the CoGen plant.
All right, keep going north. What's that, just a log deck?
That's a log deck.
Okay, yep, okay. So.
And just for, for reference, this area in here is proposed to be the first phase of the Harbor District's plans.
Right.
And then they'll work south.
Commissioner Mulder has been patiently waiting.
So I'd like to make a motion that finds that the Planning Commission has considered the environmental impact report for the commercial cannabis land use ordinance and the addendum that has prepared for North Wind Management LLC project, and finds that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the conditional use permit and coastal development permit subject to the recommended conditions of
We have a motion? Does anyone care to second it?
And that motion doesn't include any provision for future complaints about smell and mitigation?
It does not include that, as it's not a requirement.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take our vote? All right, Trip.
Iver Scott Dahl. Lonix Landry.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
No.
And Brian Mitchell.
So the motion carries four to one, and that brings us to item I, report from planner.
So the only thing I, I have for the commission tonight is just a brief update on what we're doing with the Walker Point project, and we are still negotiating with the property owner about an appropriate solution, and I, I don't really want to get into a public dialogue until we have a written process and proposal, and we don't have that yet. I do expect that shortly.
Appreciate you providing that update, and we look forward to hearing when you have that on paper.
Thanks.
Okay, so any planning commissioner discussion items? Seeing none.